Thank you, Judge.
Well, the regular meeting of Pennington County Commission to order. Just point out for our guests that there's agendas in the back of the room. We also have speaker request forms back there. If you wish to speak on any particular item, may fill out one of those forms and turn it into highly on your right. I'll ask Commissioner Hancock if she would lead us in a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Review and approve agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner, or, no.
Commissioner Hawley. We have a request to remove item number eighteen from the agenda from the applicant, please.
Number eighteen. So this is the Walder R. Miller request. I will point out if there's anyone in the audience that's here in regard to that item, when we get to it, I will still allow you to present your testimony today. Is there, is there a motion to approve the agenda and delete item eighteen?
So moved.
Got a motion. It deserves a second. Any public comment? Any comment by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Ali, consent agenda.
All right. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7th, 2021 to acknowledge the change of the final 2021 unorganized road fund and mill levy for taxes payable in 2022 to be 1.069 as submitted by the auditor. Number seven is to accept the recommendation for the appointments of Patty Bruner, Matthew Oden, Dallas Voss, Mark DeSanto, Heather Chambliss, Lloyd LaCroy, and John James to the 2022 Extension Advisory Board. Number eight is to approve the revised 2022 Board of Commissioner meeting dates. Number nine is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November 2021. Number 10 is to declare capital asset number 97073, which is a 2006 Jeep Liberty, as surplus to turn the vehicle over to the insurance company for an insurance settlement as submitted by planning and zoning. And finally, number 11 is to authorize the joint powers agreement between the South Dakota Office of the Attorney General, Division of Criminal Investigations, Pennington County, the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, and the City of Rapid City for the computer forensics examiner position as submitted by the sheriff's office.
There are members of the public who should now remove any of these items from the consent calendar so that they may be discussed. Seeing none, are there any commissioners that wish to have any items removed? And I would ask to remove number eight.
Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd request number seven, please.
Seven and eight have been requested to be removed. Any others? If not, I take a motion to approve the consent calendar with items five, six, nine, 10, and 11.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven. Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason why I asked this one to be removed is because I think we've got a new applicant that we haven't had before. Isn't it John? And I just wanted to express that we did an interview with him last week, and he was, this is the first time we've actually had one for quite a while to the 4H, and he did exceptionally well. And I remember during the interview process, I mentioned to him about going to the U-City Council that night, and that night he did show up. So he's got great interest in serving our community, and he's actually an add-on for the 4H.
Sure. Thank you.
I just wanted to give an update of, if somebody knew that we probably haven't seen for a while, but I think he was a good help.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight is the, we have a couple of suggested changes for our commission schedule. We have a regular meeting scheduled on June 7th. That is primary election day. I would ask that we consider doing that on Friday, on June 10th, as for reasons my regular work calls me to hearing on the 8th and 9th. So if you'd be agreeable to June 10th, I'd appreciate it. Also, we have scheduled budget hearing dates in June, and that also is a conflict for the 22nd for me, so I'm asking if we would consider doing the budget hearings on the 23rd and 24th instead of the 22nd and 23rd.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I'll make that motion to approve your recommendations.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Need a motion to go into executive session for contractual pending litigation.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second to go into the executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Move to come out of executive session.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 13. Mary.
Okay. We have a business that is wanting to transfer a liquor license on sale, what Sunday sells, from Sweetgrass Bed and Breakfast under MRH Services to Shipwreck's Bar and Grill under Grade Eight Enterprises. But you see, a motion to approve the transfer.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve. Is there any public comment relative to the transfer of this alcoholic beverage license? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 14. Sheriff Toen.
Good morning. Kevin Toen, Pennington County Sheriff. We've been working with the Auditor's Office to clean up the motion that's before you today, and it's the language they suggested. We have some unanticipated consequences in terms of people moving internally the way the motion was made, and was penalizing those that were already employees and not been able to receive the bonus. If you're going from one position to be a correctional officer, we felt you should be eligible, and so that's the language suggested by the Auditor's Office to clean up the motion if you're so desired.
Back up.
Got a motion and a second. Motion is to amend the hiring and retention policy approved at the August 3rd, 2021 commission meeting to include new hires, rehires, employee transfers, reclassifications, and promotions, and distribute the hiring bonus to correctional officers hired, rehired, transferred, reclassified, and/or promoted since August 3rd, 2021. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Item 15. John Morrell.
Morning, Commissioners. John Morrell, Pennington County, Human Resources. The item I have before you today is the creation of a new position within the Highway Department. This is to allow us to move forward towards, bless you, combining the Engineering Department with the Traffic Departments within the Highway Office. So again, the motion, if approved, would be moved to approve the addition of the Traffic Operations Engineer Technician Position in the Highway Department at a DBM rating of B-23 with an effective hourly rate of $20.65 an hour, effective January 1st, and to authorize Human Resources to update the position listing, which is on file in the Human Resource Office.
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Any public comment on this? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, John. I have those from the Highway Department. Joe Miller.
Hey, Commissioner. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. First item in front of you here is some certificates as far as our safety project goes with the Nemo Road Curve. This curve is actually on the Meade County, Pennington County line, kind of where our bridge collapsed last year. This project's been at the works for probably five or six years. Prior to this, it was stricken by right-of-way negotiations with the landowner. We did actually secure the right-of-way that was needed for this project, both in Pennington County and the Meade County portion. So that's what's in front of you here today is the certificate stating that we've done that, and that we've notified all utilities that this project will be happening in 2022. The cost of this project to the county is actually a 10% match, so to Meade County and Pennington County, it's a total of 10%, so we're actually 5% of that 10% match. The project is estimated, I just talked to Dustin Witt, the project manager for this one, is $3.14 million for the Norris Road, Norris Peak Bogus Gym, and then Nemo Road Curve. So our current portion of this approximate is $160,000. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Move approval.
Second. I got a motion by Commissioner Hancock and a second by Commissioner Zelazska. Commissioner Zelazska, any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is essentially the same thing here for our Sherman Street Bridge that was been, has been designed. We plan to apply for big funds for this project in 2022, for construction in 2022 is the hope. If we're successful on that, if we're not successful, we'll have to kind of relook at things and possibly move that to the following year. Just some things to point out here with our, with our big funds, since we're talking about that. Currently, I'll pull up the spreadsheet here. We're up through November, we've collected $1.34 million, $1,338,798, or $90 for our wheel tax, so we still have, have December to go through. This is our first year collecting the wheel tax, but second year being able to apply for the big funds. Last year for the bridge improvement grants, we were successful on one bridge. We're applying for several more this year, Thunderhead Falls, Sherman Street, and then we're applying for four rehabilitation projects as well that you'll see in the next item here. You know, seems like we're falling further and further behind. We had two bridges that were raided on Highway 1416, and I have a feeling that that's just going to continue coming. So it might be, you know, for the 2023 budget cycle, it might be time to look at maybe upping that wheel tax when we, when we do come to that. For 2022, we have approximately $3.5 million budgeted to go towards bridge improvements or reconstructions. That's engineering, that's the construction cost, that's all in, $3.5 million. Of that, possible bridge improvement grant monies is $2.15 million. So there's that possibility that we collect that, but there's also that possibility that we don't get those grants, and we have to go through other avenues to try and get those bridges reconstructed. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Joe. Any public comment? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next one, right-of-way and utility certificates. This is for the bridge rehabilitation projects that we're doing on 161st Avenue, Neck Yoke, and, oh, I forgot what the other one was off the top of my head. It should be in your motion there. This is, we're applying for big funds for preservation grants. Last year, there was, I believe, 13 projects that were awarded these, so we've hopefully got a pretty good opportunity here to collect some of that $3.5 million that we're putting in our budget for bridge reconstruction. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Joe.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
Item D, the last one here is just our, simply our application to apply for all the bridges that we're applying to for bridge improvement grant funding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. Public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can we stay up here? You want the applicant first.
Well, let's see. Item 17. Do you want to stay up?
I can.
Yep.
Sean's not here. He's at chainsaw training this morning, so kind of the nuts and bolts of it, all these approaches are necessary, and our office is not opposed to these, so.
And I think the only suggestion the highway had is to, relative to bringing that one culvert up to a bigger size.
Correct.
And then making sure that that roadway was 20 feet.
That is correct, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. Any public comment on this? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, just a minute for personal privilege. Joe, can you come up for just a second and tell us about the fundraiser before you leave for Fein and his family?
So tomorrow, I guess Sean and myself have purchased the food and everything. We're doing a lunch for all of our crew from 12 to 2:00. So we've asked for donations for our foreman that passed away in May or June out in New Underwood, just to go to his family, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Chairman.
Thank you. Item 18 has been removed from the agenda, but is there anybody here that came for that item that would like to speak? Seeing none. Item 19, items from the public. Is there any measures that, or any items that the public would like to bring forward before the commission at this time? Items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to item 20. I need a motion to go into the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chair, we're way too early.
Oh, I see. Forty minutes, too early. Okay. So we will skip past the Board of Adjustment at this point in time, and...
Executive session. You could go handle some executive sessions now if you would like. Move to go in an executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Take a motion for, go into Board of Adjustment.
Got to come out of executive session first.
Oh, take a motion.
Move to come out of executive session.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Agenda item A is variance VA 21-37. It's to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to zero feet for an existing barn on the subject property. The applicant is Michael and Angela Homberg. Agent is Renner Associates. Staff is recommending to continue variance VA 21-37 to the January 18th, 2022 Board of Adjustment meeting to see if the applicant attains an exception from the City of Rapid City for the width of right-of-way.
Okay, we've got a motion to continue by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ross Connect. Is there any public comment relative to continuing this item? Seeing none, back to the commission. Any further discussion on this continuance? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is variance VA 21-38. It is to reduce the side yard setback from 25 feet to eight feet for a carport on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Scott Highland. The location of the property is 8728 Sheridan Lake Road. It is owned rural residential district, accesses off Sheridan Lake Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. When approving variances, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong number one, whether granting a variance runs counter to public interest. I have it on the board. I'll read the answers. Number one, no, the request does not appear to be a threat or nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, the subject property surrounded by suburban residential districts, eight-foot side yard setbacks are common throughout the neighborhood. The requested use conforms to the neighborhood. Number three, no, the zoning ordinance requires a 25-foot setback from all property lines in rural residential district. Number four, no, the comprehensive plan identifies the future land use as rancher, which also requires a 25-foot setback from all property lines. And number five, no, the proposed structure does not appear to harm public safety, health, or the general welfare of the community. And for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance? Number one, yes, the building envelope for the subject property is limited by multiple legal non-conforming structures and uses owned by other entities, to include a wellhouse and volunteer fire department garage, neither of which meet the required 25-foot setback for rural residential district or the eight-foot required setback for suburban residential district. One A, yes, rezoning the property of the suburban residential district would require these structures obtain separate setback allowances and conditional use permits. Meeting these requirements would cause an unnecessary hardship to the property owner because they are not in harmony and are legal non-conforming. B grant, yes, granting this variance would observe the ordinance spirit and to do substantial This was run around for interdepartment review. County Highway came back. The Highway Department is not in favor of variances, but in this application, the Highway Department is not opposed as long as the front yard setback requirements are met. Dimensions of the structure should be noted as well as the distances from both the front and side property lines. Staff included this as a condition of approval. The Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 207E, that the minimum setback requirement is 25 feet from the front side and rear setbacks for all structures. There is a wellhouse on the property that is owned by the Bluebird Water Association and garage owned by Whispering Pines Volunteer Fire Department. There are also two unpermitted carports on the subject property. The applicant will need to obtain an approved building permit from the Planning Department and pay associated penalty fees. On November 24th, 2021, the applicant, Scott Highland, requested this setback variance to place a carport no less than eight feet from the side property line in rural residential district, and staff conducted a site visit on December 9th. Photos are included in your packet. Staff is recommending approval. As there are special conditions that exist on the property that would excuse the literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 207. If the Board of Adjustment agrees and approves the request, staff recommends three conditions.
Move approval based on staff recommendations?
Second. With conditions.
Got a motion and a second. Approved on staff recommendations. Cody, on the carport, so they, are they fastened down?
Uh...
Why do they need, why do they need...
So for a building permit, anything that's over 144 square feet or permanently anchored to the ground require a building permit for his proposed carport. I believe that he is anchoring it to the ground, and it is over 144 square feet.
Very good. Is there any public comments in regard to this? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Get a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Move to come out of Board of Adjustment.
For a second. And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Mallater, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C is minor plant MPL 2184 for Capita Acres LLC to create tract one of Capita Acres addition, and approval is recommended. Item D is minor plant MPL 2185 for County and Detlef Proust. KTM Design Solutions is the agent to subdivide and create lots one and two of Storm Hill subdivision number two, and approval is recommended. Item E is minor plant MPL 2187 for Jeffrey Schur to reconfigure lot lines and create lot D1 revised and lot D2 revised of lot 17 in Fort Meade Plaza number 244, and approval is recommended. Item F is minor plant MPL 2187 for Randy and Peggy Sogi. Fisk Land Surveying is the agent to subdivide and create lots 3RA and 3RB of block two of Detbroke subdivision, and approval is recommended. Item G is layout plan LPL 2183 for Laura Henny and Eric Carlson. KTM Design Solutions is the agent to combine two lots to create lot 13R in block A of Idaho's Mountain Development, and approval is recommended. Item H is layout plan LPL 2178 for ELS Properties LLC, Rick Scholke, to subdivide and create lots 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, and 3E of Bendlow Creek Mountain Estate subdivision, and approval is recommended. Item I is layout plan LPL 2180 for Gold Run 3 LLC, Gregory Rittenberg, to consolidate two lots to create lot six revised of Lowell Run Park subdivision, and approval is recommended. Item J is layout plan LPL 2179 for Marjorie Helgason, trustee, Davis Engineering, to reconfigure lot lines to create lot three revised of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, also in section 10. And it was recommended to continue to the January 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item K is layout plan LPL 2181 for Travis and Amanda Frink to subdivide and create lot one of Frink's subdivision, and approval is recommended. And finally, item L is layout plan LPL 2182 for No Bad Days Campground LLC, Rob Livingston, to subdivide and create lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and utility lot of No Bad Days subdivision, and approval is recommended.
Any members of the public question to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, back to the commission. Any commissioners wanting to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I will move to approve the consent agenda with conditions that follow each one of those items.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Following planning and zoning matters in our uncontested hearings are those which the Planning Department has not yet received or provided comment contesting the item. The documents for each item have been reviewed by the Commissioners, and decisions during these hearings will be made based on the information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If we receive comment contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. Brittany, move on to the uncontested hearings.
Item M is public hearing of rezone RZ 2131 for William and Mary Lou Carlson to rezone 1.0 acres from agriculture district to low-density residential district. The property is located in Green Valley Estates. It is currently used as residential. There is special flood hazard area on the property and accesses off of Green Valley Drive. Staff did recommend approval of rezone RZ 2131, and Planning Commission concurred with the approval of rezone RZ 2131.
Any members of the public question to address this item? Seeing none, back to the commission.
Move to approve rezone RZ 2131.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item N.
Item N is public hearing of major plan unit development amendment PU twenty-one dash seventeen for Little Guys LLC. Ben Brink is the agent to amend the existing plan unit development to allow a specialty recreational resort and to add twenty-five rental cabinet cabins and staff housing and dorms to the subject property. The property is located off of Highway sixteen A. It is zone plan unit development. It contains the Powderhouse Lodge and Restaurant and recreational area. This was routed around. There was no items of concern. The board, or, excuse me. The staff recommended approval with twenty-five conditions, and the Planning Commission concurred with twenty-five conditions.
Any public comments? Back to the commission.
Move to through with twenty-five conditions.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for approval for their discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Contestant hearings.
Cody, second, environmental planner. Item O is vacation of section line right of way of VS twenty-one dash oh six. It's to vacate three hundred and fifty-one feet of section line right of way located along the east lot line between sections thirty-two and thirty-three of Township one and Range seven E. The applicant and landowner is Michael and Catherine Cruz. The agent is DC Scott Surveyors. The location of the property is at three four oh nine Curry Drive. It is zone suburban residential district with an existing land use or residential. Access is off Curry Drive, and there is no special hazard area on the property. When, when reviewing of vacating a section line, we look at the criteria reviewed. Number one, was the section line prepared and circulated for signatures with the petition? Yes. Were there enough signatures collected? Yes. Number three, are topographical constraints in the section line right of way? Yes. Number four, is there means of access developed and moved the section line? Yes. Number five, is there access to United States Forest Service lands from the portion of section line right of way? No. And is there legal access to all property, properties abutting the section line right of way? Yes. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence built in nineteen seventy-five with a detached, with two detached garages. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. Highway Department is opposed to vacating the section line. I believe they stated that a setback variance would be better suited. The applicant is requesting to vacate the section line in order to meet the required setback for a proposed house addition. This portion of section line is not on the city's major street plan. Staff confirmed that with Kip, the long-range planner for the city of Rapid City. Other means of access have been identified with less topographic constraints to the undeveloped properties to the south. All undeveloped properties in the area have means of legal access. Staff finds that vacating the section line does not run counter to public interest. As properties in the area have legal access, the section line does not access public lands. So staff is recommending approval of vacation of section line VS twenty-one dash oh six with a condition.
So the highway, Joey, you coming forward? Okay. I was just gonna simply say what your objection to it was, but.
Well, I, I mean, there's no reason for the vacation of the section line. I, I think Megan can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but when vacating these section lines, is this actually in the best interest of the public? What best interest of the public is this going to serve, right? There's actually, I was just looking, there's three hundred and sixty acres to the east that very well could be accessed by this section line. I know there's topographical constraints, but if anybody's driven down Sheraton Lake Road, you can build a road pretty much anywhere. So I would urge you to, to think about this before we just go ahead and vacate a section line. That, the section lines have been there for hundreds of years. I, I believe a setback variance would be better suited here and keep the, the public access intact.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
I move to continue to the next meeting so we have a, a little bit better understanding and we get a look at this property based on our highway department's recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect, do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Ross Connect.
Michael called me yesterday and said he was extremely ill and his wife could knock it off work to make this meeting. I said normally when planning the zone and makes a recommendation of approval, you know, that's the way the commission votes, but obviously I think we need to discuss this just a little bit more detail. I will point out that section lines get vacated quite often. Historically, I'm sure there's a number of vacation lines or section lines that get vacated. I think each one is based on the merits, you know. But if they have been vacated in the past, I'm just saying that it wasn't in the public's best interest, but they still get vacated because if they're not needed for access or utilities, that would be to, to me, a reason that they are no longer needed to serve public interest.
Okay, the, the motion on the table is to continue this to the, is it January four? Is that our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
January four meeting. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Cody, will you get with Michael then and let him know that that's been continued?
I'll let him know, yep.
Item P.
Item P is plan unit development overlay PU twenty-one dash eighteen to allow for a plan unit development overlay to allow a recreational resort to include uses such as a swimming pool, golf course, vacation home rentals, an RV site, and a pole barn to include a butcher processing shop on the subject property. The applicants from McCory Vacations LLC, Lisa McCory is the agent, or, excuse me, the owner. The agent is Rob Livingston. The property is located at two four zero one zero and two four zero one two Twin Springs Road. It's currently zoned agriculture district and it's used as residential. The criteria that we look at for a PUD overlay district, I will just read the findings. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in an agriculture district. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet the standards governing area, density, and off-street parking of an agriculture district. Their proposed PUD overlay district is four point six acres. The proposed PUD overlay district is owned by McCory Vacations LLC, a member-managed company. Initial member managers are listed as John and Lisa McCory. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed to be detrimental or to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And Pennington County zoning ordinance, section five ten criteria are also required. So I will go through those. Those are the criteria for a conditional use permit. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding properties. Their proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary site improvements. The existing approach will provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion on Twin Springs Road, and the requested use is conformed to all applicable regulations in an agriculture district with an approved PUD overlay. And future land use is identified as rural residential, large lot residential, and natural areas as consistent use within this district. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There was no items that were objections received. The current owners, McCory Vacations, purchased this property in August twenty twenty-one with all improvements made by the previous owner and agent, Rob Livingston. Approval of this request will bring the existing and proposed uses of the subject property into compliance with the zoning ordinance. But however, the main residence was built twenty-four feet from the property line, therefore setback variance will be required to bring the subject property into full compliance with the zoning ordinance. And staff did recommend approval of this, and so did the Planning Commission with twenty-two conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I would approve with twenty-two conditions.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Got a second for discussion.
Chairman. Butcher processing shop is the only question I have on a resort. Is there any conditional use permit, or what do they mean by butcher processing shop?
So he just has an area and a locker inside that shop building that he used for his personal use to process game essentially. So it's already on that property and as part of the PUD overlay, we include all of the uses because that would typically be a conditional use. The PUD overlay is a way to have several conditional uses under one umbrella.
So it's not a commercial butcher?
It's not a commercial. It's only for personal use, and he used it for.
Just for his?
His personal use.
His, his resort so he can feed people with, he's not gonna be like selling meat or doing a butcher shop there?
No, the intent of their property is to use it as either a vacation home rental or their own, or the main house is their own property or vacation residence. The issue that came into play is that the swimming pool and the golf course would require conditional use permits, so in order to meet all of those requirements and conditional uses, they did the PUD overlay to have it as a recreational resort. That way that if they wanted to live there, they could live there. If they wanted to rent out the property, they could.
I just didn't know if they would rent out that barn or whatever for a butcher processing shop.
No, that was not the intent. It was for personal use for game.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Can that, can that be clarified in one of the?
We could clarify that. It is in, number one, it says non-commercial butcher shop.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Commissioner LaCroy.
My concern was, was the same as Ms. Haggock's with the butcher. My concern was with the byproduct because I know we have several locations in town that the byproduct ends up sitting there for days. And, and we, I've gotten some concerns on that, so that, that was one of my questions too, but I think you explained what's going on. It's personal use and being vocational, they'll probably take care of. But I think in the future, when we have that, we gotta, if we look at butcher block or shops, that we'd need to look at the byproduct of how that, what happens to it, how long does it stay outside in the area? Just something to consider because it has become a kind of a problem in some areas of the town.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
It might have been, could have been identified maybe with a different name that would have been so misleading, but butcher was the word that was used.
It's more of a game processing and a cold storage locker.
As long as it's not commercial.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items from the chair and the commission. Deb, let's start with you.
I attended the LNI red carpet. That was pretty awesome. Joe Gutierrez, who's with the JSC. You wanna see the guy that gets excited in sports and they said no knuckle bumping or whatever, and he knew a lot of the, the participants that were in there, and it was pretty cool just how excited he was and how he cheered them on, and there was a lot of people there, and Pennington County represented well with all of us and the sheriff's office as well, like to thank them. So it's a huge event, and it brings in a lot of economic development for Rapid City. So I thank them for coming to town and, and putting on this event, and that was just one way to start it out. I did see Malcolm Chapman. He was there and he represents very well for the city as well, for the Human Relations Commission and, and what he does for all the people in Rapid City, so appreciated him and his sense of humor with some of the things that he does and just his leadership on what he does for different events and, and makes them happen as well. What else did we have? I think that's probably it. I can put my other stuff under the committee reports.
Okay. Commissioner Ross Connect.
While I attended the Hill City Economic Development Corporation Christmas party, which was a nice event, because I attended that, I could not make the Central States Fair Christmas party, which I saw some pictures and it looked like that was a good event. The building committee was my, supposed to attend the building committee the next day, but Gary and I went up to Deadwood, and I'll let Gary expand on that. Deb and I both attended the Pennington County Housing Redevelopment meeting, and they had a, kind of a Christmas party. There was more treats there. That's a dentist delight to go to one of those. But we had two guest speakers. We had Barry Tyson. I think maybe Deb can expand on what Barry talked about, what he wanted to bring to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment. And then there was another lady, and I don't know what her name was, but they both would like for us to offer our services to a certain extent, and I think Deb is much better versed talking about that than I am. Then I did attend our regular Heart of the Hills Economic Development meeting, and eventually we're gonna be sitting down with Jim Nyman and trying to help him figure where he wants to go with the former Rushmore Forest Products property. The MPO meeting, I attended that in person and we talked about the Rapid City transit system, and I, we had a pretty detailed package on where that's going in the future. I gave that to Jones, so if any of the commissioners want to look at that, we do have that here in our commission office. And then they had the election of officers, and it wasn't that, that many people that really qualified, so I am now the vice chair of the MPO. Then Black Hills Council of Local Governments, I volunteered to work on the bylaws, and so we, we spent about three to four hours redoing the bylaws, and those will be, those recommendations will go in front of the board the next, the next, the next meeting. And other than Travis and I both came to the little Christmas party that they had here last week and met with the different employees and did a little celebration. And other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, I did attend the South Dakota Association and County Commissioners Board Meeting in Pierre. Senator Crabtree from Madison is bringing forward a discretionary formula bill for workforce housing. And so I volunteered to be part of a subcommittee to work with him to try to bring that bill into conformance with may work for counties. Last week, Shannon and I spent about an hour on the telephone with Senator Crabtree and others in regard to the concerns that we have in Pennington County as to how the bill was drafted, and so we'll continue to work on that. It may work better for smaller counties than it's going to for larger counties at this point. Also, as Ron mentioned, we both attended the Lawrence County meeting. This was a, along with our Natural Resources Director Scott Guffey. This is basically a discussion with local timber interests, with the U.S. Forest Service trying to move forward with what was, is a reasonable allotment of timber in order to keep our timber industry alive and well. Randy Dybert, Dybert from Lawrence County has done quite a job in getting the two states, South Dakota and Wyoming, on board with this concern, and he had a meeting that, this didn't happen at the meeting that Ron and I wrapped, but he had a previous meeting with both governors being in attendance at Spearfish or at Deadwood. And so he's doing a lot of work on that, and I think we need to keep our nose into it as, as deep as we can to get that timber allotment up as high as we possibly can. Also, Senator Duhamel arranged a meeting with State Secretary of D A and R Hunter Roberts to talk about the future water resources for western South Dakota. He talked about regionalization at that meeting, meaning no water users, meaning for water users to get together and maximize the use of local resources with the future antenna bringing Missouri River water west to supplement areas that have a need for it. Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think quite a few of us was at the LNI, and I had a Humans Relations Commission meeting right after that with Malcolm and the group upstairs. Human Relations MOA did give out some prizes for, as best described for the, the hand games as sportsmanship or generosity, those type of things that they were picked out to do. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it available to help hand out those, those recognitions, but it was a good turnout, and it's, it's amazing what LNI is doing for our community and the welcome and the comfort that the people feel when they come to our, our community. Another thing we, I attended was, it was me, Gary, and the Hollywood, the Black Hills area of local governments in Dupree. I have to admit when we go to these things, I know Gary dropped travels all over the country, the state, but I mean, for me to get out and I was to travel out in some of those areas. It's always eye opening because I haven't been out in a lot of these areas. So uh, it was good to see Zebok County and, and the presentation was a good turnout. Uh, I think we had three representatives there.
Three legislators.
Three legislators. So uh, and they're, they were bitching, I'll let Gary win. He's better at that as, as far as describing what uh, they were talking about some of the tax and ag land and so forth that's going forward. So um, that's pretty, pretty much it for that.
Commissioner Lester.
I had a busy couple of weeks. Um, so I'll just kind of run down some of the things, the highlights of it. Uh, I went out to the uh, New Underwood Fire Board Meeting, got to meet all the guys in the fire board out there in New Underwood. Um, still having uh, consistent conversations with the EPA dealing with the base uh, contaminated water. Um, the uh, the base, Rita Krebs is the point of contact at the base. They're putting it in their newsletter, announcing that we're going to be doing a county um, meeting for those that are impacted. Uh, more information is to come because we haven't set a date or anything of that nature. We haven't kind of finalized the aspects from all the entities that are going to be involved in that. Um, but they're putting me as the point of contact for anybody who's interested in that water to uh, issue to reach out to me. And so I can put their name on a list and uh, whenever we have a date and all that set up, I can reach back out to those that want to be notified as well as doing some public notifications once we get everything situated in that aspect. Um, and then the base will also, in their uh, water newsletter will also um, put out a newsletter probably a little earlier to uh, announce that meeting once it's all secured. I went to uh, the City of Box Elder for um, a highway meeting dealing with fourteen sixteen and Radar Hill Road, some of the concerns and some of the uh, information they wanted to pass on. And uh, they're working to schedule another meeting, I think with me, Joe, and I think it's in January, right Joe? Did you get that email?
Fourteen sixteen Radar Hill.
Yep. For the Reyes project. So we're going to be meeting and, and giving some more detailed information on that and what the need is and the impact in the area. Uh, but it was kind of a preliminary meeting for me. Uh, I was part of the Central States Fair Building Committee. They, if y'all didn't know, they applied for vision funds. Out of the vision funds so far, they've been, they've been approved. They applied for a million dollars worth. They got uh, approval for nine hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, at least that's what's moving forward with that. It's not a hundred percent just yet, but they're ranked pretty high for that particular piece. They pulled twenty thousand out for the um, for asphalt. Um, but the interesting thing that they passed on with this as well for their capital project improvement stuff is barn four, if we would have um, used an outside contractor, it would have cost about sixty to eighty thousand dollars. They did all the work in-house and it was about fifteen thousand dollars. So show how they're utilizing the funds they're getting um, appropriately and saving the county money. Uh, one thing to note, the air show is coming uh, May fourteenth and fifteenth. So just everyone can be aware of that uh, from the base. And then, let's see, what else did I add? I did a couple of site visits due to individuals asking me to come out and look at some things out in scenic, out in wall, uh, Radar Hill Road and some of those lots that are impacted with no water out there. Um, and I'll be meeting with the developer concerning those lots, uh, I think next, uh, after the holidays. So I'll have more information on that as well. Other than that, all the other extra stuff that we went to, the uh, uh, you know, the employee Christmas house here, the uh, Central States Fair Christmas party and things of that nature.
Okay. Any other reports from you?
Um, just uh, oh yeah, I guess I should go into the
Yep.
The uh, library report. So I did do, I was at the library meeting and if I remember, there is, the only thing to note from that was that they received a grant for their, for their book mobile, their, their mobile book grant, that book mobile. And uh, so they're working through the process for that. Uh, was at the Elevate Annual Meeting, uh, probably the biggest thing to point to Gary was there as well, but the, I, I think the interesting thing out of that with all the stats and all the, I had a good conversation with Garth uh, about planning and zoning and things moving forward, but uh, the amount of um, capital investment in our area just for the last year was three hundred and sixty-four million dollars. So that's, that's pretty, pretty uh, good numbers for our area. It explains why we're growing. And then I did not make it to the Community Health Center meeting. I had to call Lloyd and let him know because I had a conflict that evening.
Tonight.
Oh, oh, it's tonight. They did, okay. Never mind. Then I guess I'll be there tonight because they rescheduled.
Yeah.
See, I knew they were keeping me on track on that.
Is that it?
That's it.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Um, I think you guys got a good update on the Healthcare Trust Board. The only, you know, we had presentations from NAFLAC crew and on whole life insurance that they were talking about. I think one of the highlights, uh, that KJ made, made aware to the group there that the commission does uh, have a twenty thousand dollar life insurance policy. The commissioners do and espouseful of, I think, five. Just wanted to point that out. Um, and they're working on uh, looking at some joining the state and so forth. So we'll know more about that later on. Um, the Air Quality Board, I don't know what happened with that. I looked at my phone and I was going to zoom in and I had no information for it. I tried to look up the minutes for it and I don't know if they actually had the Air Quality Board in December or not. There's no minutes as of yet. Um, excuse me, right in there. Uh, and the Community Health Center Board meeting, that's tonight. That was supposed to be last week and they moved it to this week. And uh, I don't think I left anything out, but it, but I, Travis did bring up the Central States Fair Board uh, Christmas party. I think we all attended that and that was uh, a good welcome and, and good, good show there too. So with that, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just to pick up on the Central States Fair uh, meeting that, those vision fund dollars would primarily be used for that uh, remodeling of Soul Building out there, which would be great. Ron mentioned the rigor MPO uh, meeting. Uh, one of the things they are trying to do there is state is uh, working on a plan to try to keep the driving lanes open on Highway three eighty-five when they do that construction in the course of the next couple of years, which I think is good, very good news. And then uh, I think Lloyd basically said everything about the Black Hills County District Meeting. Uh, we did have twenty-six individuals from seven counties in attendance. Uh, one of the things that they are pushing is uh, it's actually uh, called House Bill fifty, which is on the uh, grazing and crop lands. Uh, and I missed this. Holly pointed it out to me that uh, it was stated that Pennington County is in support of that piece of legislation, which we have not taken any action on uh, in support of it. In fact, we have some concerns with the legislation as it's written. Uh, again, that's a point that we've worked with, with the Department of Equalization with Shannon on that. So. Commissioner Roskin act.
Well, I guess I already, out of my, out of turn, touch base on a couple of my meetings, but the Pennington County Housing Redevelopment meeting, I'll let Deb expand on the uh, request from Barry and uh, she probably knows more about the other lady that was there that asked him to work with our organization in the future. And uh, Gary pretty much expanded on the uh, MPO. So I'll pass it on to Deb.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, the Fire Service Board, uh, we had a Christmas party for the members and that was pretty fun. I got some prizes for them and we gave them some treats. Um, it was, it was good. Um, it brings camaraderie, I think, that way in a sense that um, we do remember them at Christmas as a board. It wasn't about me, it was about our board there. Um, showing that we care and they are making a difference. Um, Nick Carlson retired from the city. I don't know if anybody knew that, but he had retired. Um, that was his last day, I think, if I'm correct. So um, he's been a, a, a good leader for our community and the city and always attended our Fire Service Boards. He was our representative. So he did a great job. Um, let's see, Planning Commission, um, that went well. You have some really good planning commissioners. Um, they think things through. They ask a lot of questions and I enjoyed that and you see our results today. Um, Building Committee wasn't there, went to a dentist appointment. Or no, that was my doctor's appointment in the morning and dentist in the afternoon. Uh, when you schedule with a dentist or a doctor, you really don't have much choice anymore because they put you out about three months. So missed the weed and piss resource uh, meeting and uh, the Building Committee that day and I apologize. The Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, our board decided to have a Christmas party for the employees to bring again some camaraderie. Um, yeah, and I brought a bunch of sugar. So on behalf of our commission, um, Brian Akbach again is amazing, um, of what he does for us. And it was, he's, he's, I like him because he's emotional in the sense that he got a little teared up about the people he's helping and the things he's doing. And I appreciate a guy that's straight up like that because he's just nice. And he's, he's just a good guy. He did make a little joke about when um, he did his interviews and what uh, he had told me when he interviewed and why Deb had a little skepticism about him being, being the, the guy in charge. And we all had a good laugh on that and um, we, um, and I thank Fred for bringing him forward and, and moving him forward. And Ron um, is a part of this commission. I think what we did as this commission is move that with Brian Akbach and with these commissioners further than we ever could. And with the help of this commission, um, in every way, a couple of people were, are telling me about it that, that in one year has done more than the last twenty, twenty years. And it's because of you guys. And it's because of a good leader. He, he is amazing. So I can't say, I keep saying I can't say enough about a guy that's technical, plus has a great heart. And uh, his employees just love him. They didn't leave him and they trusted him in order to move forward in what they were going to do and, and Ron can vouch for that. He has moved them uh, with job descriptions and different things that he has done, um, to make that um, even more amazing for his employees, which I appreciate when someone doesn't think about just them. They think about all of their employees. So I thought that was just a, a cool meet, meet and greet for the employees. Barry and Alex Purcell, which I can never always think of Alex's names, I've forgotten his last name. They came on for the rebound program to see if we could make some exceptions and, and help people that way. And we had put that on our P H A or some P H S or something, right Ron? And then a lady also with human trafficking came up and did her presentation as well. So it was very informational at the meeting. Um, didn't I miss anything? Oh.
Oh, we did give Brian a review.
Yes. You want to tell about the review first?
Well, we did a review and, and so the review, I mean, I was the first one to speak and I said, well, between a one and a ten, I, I didn't want to go to a ten because then you don't have nowhere to go if you're a ten. So I said eight and a half. Well, that was the benchmark that was set and as it went around the table, uh, he was all the way into the nines and but uh, so I felt bad, you know, eight and a half. Maybe I should have been a little bit higher, but we did uh, do an executive session. We determined that we were gonna increase his salary and I think we uh, you know, the parameters could have been three. He said, you know, he said hypothetically, you don't want to go above seven. I just, and uh, I've been involved in a few other situations where we had to pick a percentage and uh, so we were very comfortable where we I think we selected six percent increase and uh, he deserves every penny of that. The funny thing about it is when I started going on these meetings, I wasn't a commissioner. I was just going there because I was upset the way some of these folks were being treated on Hampton Court. And Fred Eisenbrow probably wasn't a very, didn't think much of me. Well, at, at the last meeting, he comes out and shakes my hand. He says, thank you for what you guys have done to this commission. He says, it's really, it's just so eye opening. He says, I'm glad to be part of it again. So when you hear something like that coming from a, uh, Fred's been in this business for a long time, uh, that was kind of a feather in our hat saying, yeah, we're doing something right.
Thank you, Ron. That's a, he said it in a nutshell and like I said, it's, if we can help more people, that's why we're there and we can make it so um, more people, veterans, elderly and disabled are able to get in the community and function through this housing programs even better than they already do. Uh, that's our end goal. So uh, the other thing I forgot to say is I did go to the Central States Board, uh, Fair Board meeting, but it, or not Fair Board, their party. That was pretty awesome. They always treat this commission and their employees very well, which I appreciate about Ron Jeffries. And then was called by John and they were still having the vision fund meetings at city council. So we went to city council and supported our fair, um, Central States Fair. And then afterwards did a little bit of lobbying for us and why that's important and how much economically that that fair contributes to our city. So um, I don't know how that's going to go at this point, but anything that we can do as commissioners um, for supporting the, the fair, we have done above and beyond, I think, just by showing them how much they make a difference through our levies. But even this, that the city, um, the first time thought we were pretty important. Let's see if we can do it again. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a, a motion to, on vouchers. I need the first motion to be approved voucher in amount of two hundred and forty dollars for the Roseanne LLC. Uh, Commissioner Adcock will be abstaining from this. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor of the uh, motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, four to uh, zero with, with Commissioner Adcock abstaining. Second motion, move to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of four million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
Move approved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, next item, John. Thank you for hanging around.
Good morning, commissioners. Don Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So I've got a few motions I'd like to present for consideration and approval. The first is from the sheriff's office to acknowledge an error that occurred December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty and move Andrew Niblem to uh, grade B twenty-four, step four at twenty-four fifty-eight per hour as of November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one and retro pay him in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seven cents.
So moved.
I've got a motion. Is there a second? And a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners. The next one I have is to approve the additional hiring discretion for paramedic Brandon Mattson effective December twelfth, twenty twenty-one and place him at grade B twenty-four, step seven for an hourly rate of twenty-six dollars and thirty-six cents an hour.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then the third one I have is this. The motion is requested to approve vouchers and payments to Rhodes Outpatient Treatment Program, Inc. in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Second.
I need a motion to adjourn.
One thing, if we could.
Okay.
Um, let's thank the staff and employees and make sure they have a Merry Christmas. Hopefully they have a Merry Christmas and a blessed new year coming up. Uh, I don't think we have another meeting till then. So um, I'd just like to thank them all for all their service they, all our employees have done. Team Pennington County, um, kicked butt. So um, I appreciate everybody that's helped me and helped our community and our board move forward. So.
Good idea. We do appreciate you. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
To approve.
Lloyd. I'll, I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.